All right, 6:32, so we'll get started. An unusually short agenda, given the agendas we have been filling us. I think everybody's hopefully looking forward to an early evening tonight. So anyways, if any member has a disclosure of a key area of interest, please clarify those with the clerk before we address the item on the agenda. Onto the minutes from the July 8th and 10th meetings. Motion be resolved at the minutes from the regular council meeting held July 8th and the special council meeting held July 10th, 2019. We approve as presented, the circulated. The secondary, Council Benato, second by Council Fegan. Discussion on that in favor. Period. Public question period. Any questions tonight, Alex?
This question is on behalf of the Shelburne Free Answer. I was wondering if you could explain to our viewers, in light of the new development that's happening, is it possible that the town of Shelburne is putting the horse before the cart, so to speak? Because once again, we're in the throes of even more development before infrastructure is dealt with financially, and even more development is coming on the way. So what is council actively doing to promote sustainable future that includes retail, especially since we are the, I think we're at the suggested 10,000 mark, I think because we're two years behind in our records? And whose job is it on council to be pounding the pavement to attract more money, investment in commerce, and not just more developers? We're in a very real danger of becoming a town of houses if this isn't rectified.
Okay, so there are a few questions in there. In terms of infrastructure, are you talking about like soft infrastructure just being commercial development or hard?
Our sewer system, things like that. It already has issues that are not satisfactory to the public, so I'm just wondering.
So what we heard from the engineers reports that we have heard as of late is that the current residential development that is on track right now has developed end-to-end plans. So the current infrastructure does have capacity to handle those. The upgrades that we're going to be looking at is to deal with future growth after that. So, you know, any sewage allocation that has been given to developers that have current applications in the queue right now has all been accounted for, and there's still capacity after that. In terms of commercial development, and I know I've said this before, and it goes through what I'm saying, but I think it's a commitment of everybody around this council to see an increase in commercial and employment development. Unfortunately, it takes time, but we are starting to see the fruits of our labors. Fieldgate on the east end of town is aggressively pursuing that, and I think they plan coming in August, potentially to September now, to provide an update to council as to what their timelines look like. Specifically to ask your question, or to answer your question about whose job that is, I think it falls to all of us, but specifically it falls to our Economic Development Committee as well, which is currently chaired by Steve Holt. And I know that that group is always actively, you know, trying to dissource new investment. We have a report from our planner tonight to talk about some of the commercial investment as well, which is bulk of news, so. Is that, answer your question.
Ice river's presence?
Yeah.
No? Oh, well, thanks.
Anybody else to add? Any other questions? No presentations or delegations tonight, any council inquiries?
Council inquiries regarding the bike lanes in council, if you're concerned, but senior staff may need to bring forward. There's been some questioning on the ways being currently done. We have all these green markings on the road, no stencils on them. I know the weather hasn't been that bad recently, especially with the heat. I thought that that was one of the things that Jim mentioned to us was required for the paint to dry. It's not going ahead. I also have a concern over the fact that on Greenwood Street, with the vehicles, not necessarily understanding that it is a shared bike road, do we need to have some signage on there other than just the green paint on the street so that people realize that it is a shared bike lane road? Otherwise, the way some cars travel at the speed they travel at, at the turn, you come around the corner after Robert Street, and there's a bike on the road, I have a feeling that car's going to hit that bike. So there's some concerns I have with that. If senior staff can take that to Jim and we can answer on that, because I want to make sure that, I know it's a pilot project, I want to make sure it's safely implemented.
Yeah, go ahead.
So in the interim, through the mayor, the, I provided the report that staff had done following the last meeting, that gave you an outline of what we were implementing. We're still at the implementation, so while the share of markings are on the roads, we're not finished providing the signage and everything else that would go with that pilot project. Share markings are a very common element of alternative transportation projects, and they're probably over 30 to 50 municipalities out there that use this. So I think what we'll do is we'll follow up with the report, the previous report, and outline how a shared road program works and the stages of the implementation. And we're certainly at the front end of that with the share markings now being on the road. We have not done the public campaign that provides people with information on that, nor have we done the linkages map to provide that. We're still in the infancy stages of this getting this pilot launched. So certainly, we don't expect everybody to automatically know what those markings entail. It will be also important to educate the people that live on those streets what that program entails. And then we had said in the other report that this was an interim step, and that we would build on potentially bike lanes, which was the original request. But council will have to, I guess, have an overview of the costs associated with that, the transportation impacts of that, particularly the removal of most streets of parking, whether it's overnight or permanent parking for businesses where it's effective, and certainly let you determine what you would like to see based on those recommendations outlined, and that'll be a 220 budget issue. So that's what we had told you that we would be doing. If you want that expedited, we'll certainly try to bring something back sooner than later. But we're certainly in the infancy stages of the pilot. We just started getting the share markings on the road, and the signage is in, has been ordered, and will be installed.
The other thing is, because of, we, while we had the sign up there that indicated speed, there was a reduced amount of vehicles traveling at higher speeds. Now it's been moved to other streets. That's perfect, that's not the issue. The issue is, I think I brought it up before, can we put some markings on the streets themselves, especially in front of the park? Slow down, park, kids' crossings, I don't, you know, whatever, so that, that people do slow down. Greenwood Street, we've got a huge park there, a lot of kids cross over, and I just have a concern with the speed. Some vehicles, they seem to think it's a racehorse or two, especially on the weekends.
Any other inquiries? All right, moving on to the consent agenda, there's no items there tonight. Let's move right into the regular agenda. Steve, you're up first, the report on Greenbrook Village, final acceptance phase 1B.
Yeah, and this is probably the last report on this subdivision, the last part of the development that's not yet under municipal assumption. So there are three remaining parts of this subdivision that are proposed or requested for municipal final acceptance as part of this last round of review and inspection by the town for this subdivision. So the parts that had been previously assumed are shown here on the phasing plan are outlined in green and orange. And so the first part of the subdivision to be assumed is the north part. Most of the phase 1, excluding ones, were away and the stormwater pond, those were deferred to everything being completed. Phases 2 and 3 have been fully assumed and have been operated by the town for a few years now. 4, 5, and 6 were assumed after, after the north, after the subdivision. And so really, this is for the stormwater pond, Wong's Road Way, Phase 8, as you can see as you come into the subdivision, the state extensions of Hammond Street and Albert Drive, as well as the future park block at the south end of the development where the lots, Greenwood Park. So those are the current requests for final acceptance. We've also shown Phase 9 on this map, but as summarized in my report, there is no municipal infrastructure for Phase 9. Phase 9 will come forward through separate site plan applications when commercial development is proposed. We've had preliminary pre-consultation meetings with the owners, TRICAP, and they haven't brought any site plans forward. They had some preliminary proposals, but we don't know yet the timing of when they might bring something forward for those two municipal blocks. So again, this is just summarizing the components requested for final acceptance. What does final acceptance mean? This is the first time that this council's been asked to grant final acceptance. I thought I'd cover that. Firstly, it means that the developer has fulfilled all of its obligations under the subdivision agreement. If the town grants final acceptance, that means the developer's then released from those obligations. Means that the financial securities that the developers provide, it's the letters of credit and deposits to guarantee the completion of that work, are then released back to the developer. From that point forward, the town then assumes future maintenance responsibilities for all public works, infrastructure, roads, land dedicated to the town in the development. And there is some requirement that is maintained on title, basically for all future landowners, including current homeowners, that are required to maintain block rate and unit range in accordance with the subdivision plan. Really, two issues linger a little bit, and we're here probably a bit earlier than we otherwise would be. If we had one more meeting in a couple of weeks' time, we probably would have deferred to make sure these issues were finished before we came forward, but just a couple of things that the town would like to monitor. The first is that, and you really can't see this unless you're walking right over these sections of road, and somebody with an eye for this kind of thing points it out, but there are some rough patches on the final asphalt in Phase 8, as well as on the last section of Wong's Road Way. The developer has indicated from their engineer's opinion that this is a cosmetic issue. The concern by SBA engineering is that this could reduce the lifespan of that asphalt, and it really will take one more winter to tell if this really is just cosmetic, or if some of these rough patches start to get caught by the snowplow. And if we see evidence of chipping, that means that next spring or summer, there should be some repaving, cutting out of some of that final asphalt and fixing it up. So because of that deficiency, SBA engineering has recommended a holdback of $100,000. They calculated all of those red areas identified on the plan there, that would be the maximum value anticipated to replace asphalt in those areas if needed. And so the developer's proposing to post some funds with the town, basically to pay for that work rather than waiting another year for final acceptance. The other issue that's lingered a little bit, and the developer has acknowledged that they owe the town some maintenance and some rectification of the deficiencies in the future park block. So this is out the south side of Tansley Street. Through the development, the extent of the wastewater ponds were reduced in order to accommodate the development, and that former waste pond area was reclaimed and filled in to become future park land. So part of that land has already been developed with this subdivision for Brigham Field, so there is one soccer field there. There was a plan, you can see the lines dashed in here to do another future senior soccer field, but really, that park block is available for the town to determine what it will do with in the future. It's land that is owned by the town. Most of that land was already owned by the town. It was simply expanded a little bit further north up to Tansley Street as part of this development. The requirements of the developer, because that's a future park development block, is simply to provide topsoil and seeding of the block. And they did that a little bit late back here, and as a result of that, it's not maybe to the standard that we would expect. There are some bare patches, some rough points, we need some smoothing of, and there have been one formal complaint launched by a resident of the area indicating safety concerns with the quality of the groundwork in there, with kids walking through to access the park. So here you can see that same area on the bear photo, the orange lines indicate the fencing. After Brigham Field was built, a fence was put around the perimeter of that field, really to prevent motorized vehicles from passing through there. What it does now is it cuts off Brigham Field and the developed part of Greenwood Park from the future park block. There are two other walkways already from the subdivision at the southwest end into Greenwood Park. You can see those red arrows, that's where there are walkways into the park from the subdivision. But now with Phase 8 being completed on the east side, what we have is kids and residents in general cutting across the future park block, hopping the fence, and going to the rest of Greenwood Park that way, instead of taking the sidewalk down Tansley Street to the other walkways. So I've discussed that, we're stat, we're trying to come up with a solution. Do we open that gate, given that people are popping the gate anyway? Do we try and create an interim trail situation where we have a, you know, we recognize the desire line and put some asphalt, or not asphalt, but some screenings in there? So there's a few options that we're reviewing with the developer, but as a bare minimum, they're required to fix up the seating and some of the soil work that they've done in there to flatten it out and make it safer for public access. These are some of the pictures that we received with the complaint. You can see it is a bit rough, the seating's a bit bare, some of the weeds have grown up along the fencing against the residential properties around the edges of this block as well. You can see in the bottom right picture, there's a sort of a dirt part closer to Tansley Street. That was not seeded as well as the other parts, partly intentionally because that is where is intended to be a future parking area for the soccer fields and for that park expansion. That work, though, we don't have a timeline or budget established yet when that might be done. So we're going to work with the developer and try and come up with a better interim condition for that land, as well as some of the other dirt patches that you see here, and then to do one more round of maintenance on the edges to trim down the weeds. I would note as well, as part of the complaint that the town received, the berm, as pictured in the bottom left, that's an acoustic berm that's required between the subdivision and industrial property to the south. That's the mitigating noise in case somebody were to buy that property and use it for industrial purposes in the future. That berm has to stay, it can't be removed, it's a land use compatibility measure. It was intentionally naturalized, so not manicured and not mowed, because that helps to stabilize the slopes, and would also be difficult to mow, given the slope, the steepness of the slope. So natural coverage within the approved landscape plans for that berm. The nature of the complaint was that there are things like mice and maybe other animals nesting in there, and that was a concern of the other resident, but the reality is that that berm is intended to be naturalized as you see it in the picture. So staff are satisfied with that.
Steve?
You said industrial?
Yeah, it was industrial to the south, I can show you on the previous slide.
You're talking about where the G O yard is?
No, it's actually the property to the south, north of Steel Street.
Oh, I know.
I think there's a market there right now.
There's a market there, yeah.
Yeah, but it is zoned industrial.
It's zoned industrial?
Yeah. So three recommendations for this report.
We rezone it.
First is just to receive the report. Second is a bylaw is required to be passed to grant final acceptance. What we're recommending is that if council authorizes a bylaw tonight, staff will not actually issue a final acceptance certificate until we have the deposit for the surface asphalt and until we're happy with the park block. And that way, we can move forward over the rest of the summer to finalize those items. So really, those are the two conditions. And then after that, this subdivision is finished, and if you're aware of any other concerns, this is the time to raise them now, but we haven't heard of any other outstanding matters for the subdivision. So without any questions in our mind.
Yes, but thanks for clarifying that, because that was going to be one of my questions. I wasn't sure if the plan was that we would issue the certificate now, but sort of leave a condition in there. I was a little afraid, you know, of not having any team to enforce that. But the idea is, we won't actually issue that certificate until those issues are reconciled. Yeah. Any questions, Steve?
Industrial, can we rezone that commercial? Because right now, there really is no industry in there, and if we do that, does the berm then out of there, so it maybe is a concern to that resident?
The town can rezone property as part of the general zoning bylaw update, which we have to do at some point. Our landowners get some say in that, and they have appeal rights as well, so it would depend if the landlord was supportive of that rezoning. If they were, we probably still need to chair some sort of fencing or something along that boundary, because some commercial uses can still generate noise that requires some buffering. So it really depends on the commercial use before we can say for sure that we wouldn't need any kind of noise mitigation on that property.
Okay, and when you say leaving it natural, can we get the developer to put some trees or something else, because the berm looks ugly, it's just sitting there?
We, you can't, just because it wasn't on the approved landscape plans, but the town will become, is the owner of that berm now, and so the town can plant whatever it likes on the berm. I would have to get landscape architecture opinion on what trees.
Mindy, do we add for trees?
Sure, I'm sure you meant to, to your, to your owner. So, it's naturalized, but that doesn't mean it has to be grass. We could choose to use wildflowers or some kind of vegetation. Trees are problematic because just the arms are, you know, they fall or whatever, the way, they're also, they're permanent, more permanent. So is that something that council would like us to look at in terms of, in the community garden's going to have a strong wildlife, wildflower native plant material theme to it? This is something we could actually use as an educational component or feature of the community and say that we're committed to this, you know, a lot of migratory birds and butterflies, for example. So certainly, we could try to make it look more attractive and deter some of the negative concerns that residents are expressing at the moment in aesthetic and turning it totally green.
I don't see what might not happen.
We could do basically shots of daisies, purple comb flower, lappid susans, all of those have long longevity and heat and they drink of sun, and they're also very beautiful.
But it's the garden they put in, you know, recently?
It's a wildflower butterfly migration, the one you walk through.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, and then on Wayne's Road Way and some of the other streets where there's issues with the asphalt, 100,000 is enough, because I sure don't want us to be caught short and end up having to pay for repairs at the end of the day. We've got enough.
Twenty, that's it.
Yeah, so you, I think you came with just a little over 80,000, and they built in like a 15% contingency in case it was over that.
Nineteen and 2019 prices or 2020 prices?
It would be current prices, but the contingency was in there to account for variation and that sort of thing. And it is only one year, so if this proves itself in another year's time, then we would have to release that back to the developer.
And we could do that?
Yeah.
Reduce it back.
No, so they would get the deposit back, and then any future repairs?
You can't get a road back to it and say, well, it sucks, it wasn't built right. Because that's the thing, I hate, you know, happens in the town from time to time when you get something that looks good for a little while, and then next year, you got problems to know.
Yeah, and this is really a contingency in case it is more than just a cosmetic. Because basically, it looks like normal sort of asphalt, it's just a little bit more pebbly on the surface, and it's only in very small sections.
Yeah, and the part section there where you were talking about a trail, is, I almost think that's a better idea, because if they're already hopping a fence and walking through there, we might as well put a trail in there and at least make it safe as humanly possible for them to go through there.
So I didn't fully explain that, but right now, along the northwest side of Brigham Field, a trail comes up both to the midpoint of the field and ends there. The idea of that was eventually getting extended roughly along those red lines, but those red lines represent basically the desire lines that we see people walking along.
I've been through there, and I've been through the mic, so I know what's there. That's what I'm saying.
You've got a snake bitten.
Eh?
You've got a snake bitten over there?
No, I remember saying that.
So there's basically a couple of options with the, one of the options would be that they bring in some screenings and put in interim trail in those two locations within the future park block, it still wouldn't connect all the way down to Brigham Field. Another is that they provide some payment.
Why can't we connect all the way to the?
Well, the town, the town can, but basically, we'd get money for the value of that limestone screening, screening from the developer and use it in addition to some development charge funding to do the whole trail and make it permanent. So it'd be a little bit more expensive.
And then that's supposed to be a gravel parking lot, that future park?
Uh, gravel or be, north of that red line.
And what's the big, I guess, is, do we have money to gravel? Because it looks like calmed right now.
It is in the D C study, I just don't know if there's any available funds for park related improvements for this year or next year for that.
On the top of my head, I can't tell you.
There is? So the parking would only be north of that dotted red line?
Um, that, I think there's sufficient room there to provide enough spaces. The other scenario shown here was we extend two lots, one smaller lot along Tansley, minus a second lot, from a maintenance standpoint. But that's, that's a good configuration to get people closer to the field. Thinking was make it one larger parking lot north of the red trail line, and, you know, people will have to walk a bit further to get to the field, but at least the parking is consolidated in one lot and closer to Tansley Street.
And do we have enough money to hydroseed the rest of it that's not a parking lot, so it looks like a part of a park?
Um, well, we have to come back with a few with a further report on that, but basically, what we're asking the developer to do is to clean it up a bit, probably apply a bit more hydrose.
And some offsoil?
Yeah. This kind of goes into the question that I was going to ask with that particular area there, since they have no timeline on when they, when that parking lot is going to be, they're going to be not asked the developer to actually just hydroseed this as if it is just straight ground.
That was what they were supposed to do, and I don't know if they tried and it just didn't take very well in that part, or if they were intentionally meaning some of that there. There was discussion prior to when they did the work that maybe we just leave it there and the town would come in the next spring to do the parking lot, but that spring is gone now, so.
Because there's no timeline in that, can we?
Yeah, it would be good to be.
Because of the contingency that we're talking about having in place, if we, can we stipulate how much hydroseeding we want to have and make sure that it is actually fully covered?
And the thing is, they have the topsoil.
Right now, that's clay.
Yeah. You can't, the hydroseeding, it's from here to whatever, and it's not, it's going to do nothing for you.
The question that I've got is, can we put it on, put the onus on to the developer and make sure this is?
Then gets done.
Yeah, so there, the onus on them is not to make it look like, let's say, the sod you see in the bottom left picture, but to make it look a little bit thicker than what you see in the left picture.
The bottom right, so we don't see any grass at all?
No, no, so basically, they're required to stabilize the land surface so it doesn't pick up dust and so that it's not going to create a lot of rock and mud. So there's a bit of a gray area there, what's acceptable is to keep the landscape architect, but I just don't want to create the expectation that this would be manicured lawn like the rest of the park, it would be still more of a bare, almost naturalized condition. The town could mow it, cut it, but it wouldn't be to the level of a normal, fully developed park.
I don't want it to look like it's, like soy has, or corn's been seeded in there either, you know? You want to make it look like, like, you know, something green.
This isn't quite what we expected, and that's why we're still working with the developer on it, but I just don't want to, you know, give you a false expectation of that idea.
It has to be, no, but it should look like the, where the trail behind those houses, behind Greenwood, you know, that's a naturalized area, and there's grass in there, and it looks at a decent. That's what I expect on that park, same kind of idea, just, you know, that it looks.
I think what Steve's trying to say, that their original obligation wasn't to create sort of final surfacing on it, which is saw, it's more or less an interim measure with, you know, some grass in order to prevent erosion until we decide what we're going to do with it.
Well, I thought that's why it would be hydroseeded.
Yeah, and that's what they did for asphalt, yeah.
It didn't work.
It didn't take, it didn't work if you don't put some soil on there, decent soil.
There's some difference in that, I think, too, sorry.
Any other questions?
Yes, so I was, I had maybe two questions. So what's the timeline in order to get this done? Because I'm sure that would be helpful for those, I mean, I live in that subdivision, and some of these complaints are. and some of these complaints obviously, some of us have received, including myself. So is there something that we could hopefully go back with to these residents to sort of calm the storm and say, okay, listen, here's the plan, whatever the cosmetic upgrade is going to be, but here's the plan, here's the timeline, it's the way it's going to be done?
At this point, I'm awaiting a recommendation from the developer landscape architect to say, this is what we would suggest you do in the interim until you develop this park. Whether that's to clean up the soil and seeding work that they've done, make it a bit better, or to put an interim limestone screening trail in there, or simply to give the town some money that it can use towards developing the park block. What we've impressed upon them and what was the nature of the complaints, that'd be really great to have some cleanup done to make it at least at a bare minimum safe to walk through before the school year starts again, because I gathered from the information received that students are walking through there to get them with Glennbrook School. This is not a school board sanctioned walking route to school and it's not intended for that, even when we do get the trails completed. Normally a safe walking route to school means the trails are not only paved but maintained throughout the winter. And in some cases they're required lightened because the winter could start very early. So the school board has provided all residents with a map showing the sidewalks students are supposed to use and I just wanted to raise that because some of the complaints or comments we've received are that it's not safe as a walking route to school, but it was never intended to be that. We do want to encourage parents to send their kids walking to school on the sidewalks and not, not using trails as a lonely portion to maintain.
So Steve, the recommendation is that this condition be satisfied to the satisfaction of the town, so before that final sufficiency issue?
Yes.
With the back and back to council, or would that be a decision made?
We would like the ability to make that decision so it can be done in the next few weeks to have that work at least started. As a minimum, I would say it would be doing more seeding and topsoil work. It may involve putting some screens down. We just haven't had that confirmed by the developer. If that's an option, I'm willing to consider. That would be over and above what they're actually required to do. And then in terms of actually developing the park block or something, that would definitely come back because of the report and with the master planner, a plan for the park.
You know, I, I get that and I guess there has to be a bit of give and take too. So if they want us to provide a certificate, you know, sort of on, on good faith, then they may have to go a little bit further than their original obligations to entice us to do that.
Block nine, we're accepting block nine, which is current name, aren't we? It's in your red for acceptance, correct?
Yes, yes.
Block nine right now is just an empty area, correct? If we accept that and they do come back to develop it, I don't know. I'm just wondering for the front end of Waynesboro Way, you know, I'm assuming there's going to be heavy traffic going through there to develop that. That's the entrance into the construction sites on both sides, right?
Right, so we would put into those like plan agreements, what we put into all of them, what is if they cause any damage to the spore rootways, they're responsible to repair it. The final asphalt is down on Longspur Way, so regardless whether people are building fences inside the subdivision or putting a commercial plaza in, there's risk of damage to it. And that's, I guess, the case anywhere where there's some land that can be developed, but in that case we'd have an agreement just saying you have to repair the asphalt if you damage it.
And then going back to block nine again, because right now it's sort of scraped down soil, are they just waiting for natural weeds to grow up in there? Are they planning to do something with that beyond that? Are they going to put something else down there in the meantime because they have nothing going on?
Um, again, the same requirement exists there where it just has to be stable and properly graded. That's, that's part of this final acceptance process is making sure that that's the case. I haven't had any concern brought forward that they're not stable or properly drained. They did have sediment ponds in those two blocks and they removed those and they did, I mean, it would look like that until somebody comes forward with a site plan. There was no requirement to have them fully seeded or soiled with topsoil and hydroseeding, for example, just to make sure they're stable with vegetation. We certainly have our landscape architects look at the blocks again to make sure.
Just to make sure, yeah, because.
No spots that are going to raise dust.
And that's, it's not only dust, the next thing you know, she had complaints on the berm and everything else with mice and rats and every other thing that just don't want to pull weeds. And you have that same issue with the homeowners there in block eight.
I mean, they, they are, those homes need to be privately owned properties and like any property, you know, can enforce the property standard by the municipality of the weeds and buildings. And we can call them out to, to maintain it.
We don't want to get our bylaws or homework in half.
All right, well, we'll read the motion. If there's any further discussion, we'll try to connect that afterwards. It's be resolved. The council receives report P two thousand and eighteen dash sixteen from the town planner regarding final acceptance of phases one B and eight of the Greenbrook Village subdivision and that leave be given for the reading and acting of bylaw number forty five dash two thousand and nineteen being a bylaw that authorizes final acceptance of phases one A, stormwater management facility, phase one B, one bermway, phase four acoustic berm and future park block and phase eight of the Greenbrook Village subdivision. And the council authorizes staff to issue the final acceptance certificate upon receiving the required contingency deposit for surface asphalt repairs and subject to the recommendation of remaining landscape deficiencies in the phase four future park block and satisfaction of the town. We move our second for that, moved by Council Fegan and seconded by Council Buffett. Any further discussion or questions, directions for Steve? All in favor? Okay, Steve, final building subdivision.
Yeah, so this subdivision is at a different stage. I've summarized some of this information in my report, but just to give you a little bit of a recap, because many of the decisions were made by the previous council with respect to this subdivision. There's been quite a number of previous reports, bylaws and agreements pertaining to this development going all the way back to July twenty seventeen when the draft approval was issued. Basically, the way subdivisions work is that there's a draft plan approval which sets how that subdivision will be laid out, the number and types of units, even if it's a range of the number of units, where the power streets will be configured and some of the basic fundamental aspects of subdivision development. And that's a conditional approval, so there are thirty seven conditions that the developers then require to clear in order to get final approval. So that's what the developers are requesting now and the purpose of my report tonight is to recommend final approval of this development. Since the draft plan approval, the town has approved several other things, including street aims for the development.
Sorry.
Preservicing agreement and amending agreements, supplementary agreement for acoustic fencing last summer. The street lighting design, as well as a subdivision agreement that came forward last October. And the miss council has dealt with the third preservicing agreement back in April, which is really for the sanitary maintenance station. The zoning is also in place for the subdivision, which is one of the required conditions. So this final plan for approval does not be due significantly from the draft plan. It does refine it. What it does is it takes lotless blocks and actually defines the number of lots within those blocks. So the original draft approval allowed for up to two hundred and seventy three housing units to be developed in Highland Village. The final plan shows two hundred and forty five units. So what that would do is free up twenty eight units that can be then transferred back to the unallocated reserve of servicing capacity. So the development's a little bit fewer units than, than were allowed by the draft approval. The unit mix is shown there. We've got a fairly even mix of singles attached, semi detached street town housing. And then some other key statistics about the subdivision there, the purpose of the other blocks in the development, which is consistent with the draft plan. This is a community information map that would be on a larger sign at the entry to the development, basically giving any prospective purchasers or people who have purchased a lot, all the information they need to understand what would be happening in this development. But this shows is in purple and pink are all the lots that will have single detached homes on them. In blue is the semi detached blocks, in, sorry, in the darker blue. In the lighter blue and the yellow are the townhomes. So you can see the different units, as well as the landscape stormwater blocks, future park blocks, and then the realigned drainage drain at the south end of the road. There's also some landscape buffers on either side of the subdivision to provide some separation from the industrial properties east and west of the development. There are really two conditions here that I've highlighted in more detail in my report that require, I wanted to ensure council has specific understanding of, because first of those conditions was a specific request of the previous council. There was some concern about having this number of lots and homes on one single access to Main Street. That is really the most access to Main Street, but this development through the life, because it doesn't have enough frontage along Main Street to have two public road. So the condition basically reads that at the time of final approval, which is now, council has to be satisfied that one of these three things is the case. A, that the one main road entrance into the subdivision is adequate, or B, that we have some sense of where a second road access outside of development could go. Or C, the subdivision agreement provides some obligation on the developer to provide a second access. That will be determined later. So this all stemmed from the secondary plan, which you can see here. Outlined in blue is subdivision property. You can see there's one main access, which this is accommodating to Main Street, but then there's a second access to Main Street for the east, which is outside of the development. That is not part of this development. It doesn't provide for a second access directly up to Main Street, but it does provide three future road stubs, east and west, which would rely on access through the other properties to get back to Main Street.
Yeah, so what I was mentioning to you earlier through there, with regards to having a second access, my concern is because there's so many homes in there that are all going to be going out onto Main Street right through downtown Shelburne. That's going to have a huge impact on the settlement, so looking at the other alternative, possible access onto Victoria Street where they can go south would seem to me like the better alternative.
Yeah, so the secondary plan does identify the possibility of having another future access on the west side of Victoria that would line up Franklin Street. That is not within this development site, so the developer doesn't have control of that access, just like the other access on Main Street. That access, if it's possible, will be determined when the property to the east is developed. So right now, there's nothing really being negotiated to provide a second public road access there.
When you say property to the east, which property?
It's the, it's owned by Stella Jones. It's the Shelburne Protection Site. And then there are two properties south of that where that road will have to go through. The one is a dozen farm property, then another private property east of that. So because there's other properties involved and the timing and type of development is not known yet, that, that access over Victoria Street could depend on, on those properties. So what we looked at the draft approval stage is basically freezing three townhouse blocks until the town is satisfied that there will be some other form of access or that the one access is sufficient in the interim. So we've had a final traffic study provided by the applicant, which is one of the draft plan conditions, and that final traffic study confirms Street A or Barnett Drive has one access with a left turn lane coming in off of Main Street, which will be constructed by the developer. Provides plenty of capacity for traffic operations, for traffic coming into and leaving the subdivision with no poor level of service. Like it would be still a minimal wait time to either come in or leave the subdivision. But notwithstanding that, that was a conclusion previously as well. We still looked at these other potential access computer issues. They do require going through other properties to the north, however.
That's a minimal wait time.
Um, I'm not sure exactly how the traffic engineers define that, but there's four or five different levels of service, A, B, A three. E is basically is no longer acceptable, that the wait time would be beyond what any reasonable person would expect at a light or at a stop, stop sign. So we're talking minutes. I believe this, the traffic study came out at its level of service, so it's pretty close to the top level of service that you can get for leaving the subdivision or coming in based on the traffic modeling. And the reason for that is although there's two hundred and forty five homes proposed, is that the distribution of traffic is pretty widespread. The differences in people's schedules and people's place of work and there will, all of those factor in. There are larger subdivisions in this that I know have one access. But again, the intent here is not to have one access forever, is that when the land on either side develops, there would be multiple points of access to Main Street to help filter the traffic.
The reason I ask you why it's reasonable timing is because of emergency. If there's a fire in that subdivision in one of those homes, what's a reasonable time for the fire truck to be able to get in there? And minutes makes a big difference in a fire.
Yeah, so that was a concern through the draft approval stage as well, and as a result of that, there is a dedicated emergency access, emergency vehicle only access.
And that's going down as the stormwater pond?
Yeah, so I can't point to it with this, but it would go through the green block one sixty two and be paved access with a gate that allows the fire department and maintenance vehicles on the way to town to come in through that access and bypass the intersection. So if there is worst case scenario of delay or an accident at Barnett Drive and Main Street, there will be a dedicated access there for maintenance.
I guess timing factor as well.
It does have to be gated, otherwise people will use it unauthorized, but.
I'm assuming it's not going to be gravelled but paved, gravelled, is it?
No, it'd be paved.
It'll be paved? The fire department have a key for the gate?
Yes, yeah.
Have they signed off on that too? They, they feel that's adequate?
Yeah, they, they indicated no comments or concern with respect to the development.
The, the left hand turn lane off of eighty nine going into the subdivision, is that going to be a dedicated left hand turn? So they're going to widen the road as well?
Correct, yeah.
Is there such a thing as an electronic gate that they can open without having to get in?
Uh, there probably is. We haven't looked into that.
I, I think that, like, see something along that line in there, so that they don't have to get out of the vehicle, spend time to get into it if it's possible. So it just opens from the vehicle and they can get in. I don't know if that's possible.
It exists. This is a question of who's going to pay for it. Can we get the developer to get rid of that?
It's right behind you. You can ask that question.
I was just going to, I'm just going to chime in and say that in other developments, we've had this situation where we've had bollards that the EMS can actually drive over and a regular car can't unless they want their underside ripped apart. But larger EMS vehicles can drive over these bollards. We've, we've done it. I've actually done it before and it's been in another subdivision for this reason.
That would be more to my, my liking than having to get out of the vehicle, get over it, and then get back in the vehicle.
Minutes are a cost.
That's a time you drive.
Oh, definitely.
So we'll confirm specifically with the fire chief on what type of gate it would occur.
Faster, both ambulance and, and fire can get in there, the better, at least the same, I'm sure.
So this just provides further information about the access envisioned by the secondary plan. You can see it in the subdivision in the middle and conceptual road alignments on the properties on either side. It's become evident that the property to the east is not likely to be developed for residential purposes in the near term. You know, another wood product producing industry has purchased that property and intends to be there for quite a while. So with that understanding, it's unlikely that there would be a public road that's going through the property to the east. What we are in the process of negotiating with all landowners involved is the opportunity to protect a right of way along the future street shown that runs north, south to Henderson Way, east of Barnett Drive. So that would be right across from John Street and we just provide a second point of access that the town can create a municipal road there. Either when that land develops or it's this other development in the, in the area that, that requires that access. This also protects, you know, if that property to the east does develop. This also protects, if that property to the east does develop, the opportunity to cross the county right-of-way if that's possible at that time to join to, say, Wellington Street or maybe one other street to the east. They should mention the west as well. We have had a pre-application meeting now with that landlord, and they are interested in moving that property into residential land use. So we are expecting a subdivision application there soon. And west of the Tribune, having built its subdivision, access to Main Street is completely controlled by the MTO. So that gray line that we show going out there is conceptual, it's not clear if MTO, in fact, I think it's unlikely that MTO will permit it access directly on the highway in the high in that location. They may allow restricted access, say, right in, right out, for example, but Barnett Drive in the near term will be the primary point of entrance for the land. The other condition that I wanted to highlight for council is that there are two forest main locations to service in the area that have been included in the subdivision agreement and that are still being finalized as part of the engineering design. This was identified in the draft approval stage as well. The dash yellow line that goes north of the development and out to Main Street would connect to an existing sewer on Adeline Street. The downside of that route is that the Main Street repaving project becomes a lot more work and would be a longer project. It wouldn't require full closure of the road, but it would be a longer period of construction on Main Street than if the forest main can be repaved the other way, which is across the Stella Jones property to the east, across the county on right-of-way, down Victoria Street and connecting to Franklin Street. And the sewer around Franklin Street has been oversized to accommodate development. So the other downside of the Main Street sewer is that that would only have enough capacity in that forest main to service the Tribune development, whereas the red dashed line would actually have capacity for other development, including the property to the west and if the Stella Jones property were to redevelop as well. So one thing is for sure is that we will get the solid red line installed, that portion of the forest main will go in. What's not yet known at this point is whether the forest main, the rest of the group will go in, the southern part of the Stella Jones property or whether it will go on Main Street. Either way, Main Street does require some reconstruction and urbanization. There'll be a sidewalk, hallway, the existing sidewalk from this development to downtown area. There will be some curb and gutter installed, so there will be some rework there, but it would just be a bigger project to put forest main in as well. If it goes the other route, there would be a little bit of work on Victoria Street that otherwise wouldn't be required.
So why can't the forest main follow the roadway that was constructed for the trucks to come in and out of the property rather than going through Stella Jones?
So that would take it through the farm property and into the flood plain, and you don't want forest main in the flood plain to a place to drink. I believe part of that truck group and partially township as well, so we wouldn't be able to run the sewer through the township land.
It's quite a bit further south than Franklin Street.
It is, yeah. We do have, yeah, municipal boundary follows the south end of this.
I thought you meant it was in the town Shelburne, basically?
No, just the east of the ten acre, 20 acres, yeah. So if you're to trace a line straight down from the east to the blue line, that's roughly the west edge of the proportion of the rest of the property that's in Shelburne.
Property straight south of this development?
Yeah, yeah, straight south of this development.
So just want to go back, I think you've mentioned that we should be anticipating another line of subdivision coming in, so additional homes in addition to the 245, sorry, in a group. And so with that, I could see quite rightly the concern about the balance of residential. I know that's for all council to approve and all that stuff. But what I'm wondering is, you know, the mayor mentioned Steve Bowles is the chair of the EDC, and I'm wondering whether or not he may wise to have maybe a report from the EDC presented to council with respect to what their goals are with respect to securing business and at least give us an update of what the plan is and allow us an opportunity to provide some input and direction as to what that plan is, so that we can maybe ease the concerns of members of the public to say, here's the strategy when it comes to economic development, this is the path that we're looking to pursue in the short term, midterm, and long term, that makes sense, and at least with that plan, people could potentially buy into what's happening in the town other than just mere houses seemingly growing up.
So if I may, in that context, there has been interest in a commercial development at, just in the square part north of this development, south of Main Street, there is a proponent interested in actually doing a commercial plaza there. That's still in the pre-application consultation stages. And one thing that's to be clear from them is that they want people to be there to service that. So it all makes that, it bridges together again the relationship between having a market and enough people to support some business.
Fair enough. And I think that's great. I'd still like to see an active plan. We'll take it, but I want to see an active plan, almost like a strategic plan as to what's happening.
Can I answer that because I'm in the EDC? That was one of the things I asked, I remember it was the last of a meeting before that we do as a committee, start to actually have you come to our meeting and talk about our next five years and the next strategic plan as it relates to development in the town. Is there a direction?
No, and that's fine, getting a little bit obvious on that from Steve's report, but yeah, no, points well taken, yeah.
So just back to the servicing that subdivision agreement does allow for either option, there is a ongoing discussion happening with Stella Jones that would allow that easement to be acquired, and that would ultimately become a town home easement, well, in favor of the town, so that maintenance and replacement of that forest main, if and when that would ever be needed, could be done by the town.
And that NART and Stella Jones property, that's not the NART?
No.
Ah.
Sir, so just for clarification, the two options that we have for the forest main, it's forest main number one, which is the yellow line going north, and forest main number two, the solid line next to that, this is going to go anywhere outside of your including going down south?
Yes, because we've known for basically since the town did its master's work in the time, way back in 2003, there will need to be a trunk sewer of some kind through this area, and so this will at least allow that to be secured. If for some reason the dashed line portion can't be built now, which Stella Jones doesn't agree, for example, to the easement, that would then become a constraint on, say, the property to the west or Stella Jones property itself to be developed, that one of those property owners would then have to negotiate and build that forest main in order to have it developed.
Just so I understand, how this works, does that mean that's going to be a block off right at that blue line?
Yeah, it would just be a sewer that's plugged and would be available for future use, but it wouldn't have any water flowing through it until future development.
Is there any concern then, because obviously whenever you're doing these routes, you're taking into consideration your direction of flow, so if the choice is to go north along Main Street, because this is an awful lot of way, that's going to be a lot of water if the flow is going down that direction, that's a lot of water that's going to be sitting in there. Is there a concern of degradation within that if there's no future plan for that other line?
Oh, there would be nothing in that, like, it would be dry, it wouldn't have...
Oh, so it's blocked out for the route?
Yeah, exactly. All the outflow from the subdivision would go along the yellow outline, but if, when the dashed line does get completed, then the subdivision, current subdivision, presumably would be replumbed as well and sent down the red. So eventually that red forest main will be needed and will service not only this alone but the other one, and that's why it's all going in now, it's just that last connection point over through Franklin Street, when the timing of that, whether it's now or whether it's later. So Main Street sending it down Main Street over to Adeline does create some downstream capacity concerns for longer-term development, like it could limit downtown reinvestment or downtown redevelopment, for example. It allows for some intensification, but maybe not for a full building, if that could be possible there.
So basically using route number two is conditional upon getting that easement?
Yeah.
So, and that would be the recommended route clearly, right?
Yes, yeah, that's the long-term solution, so that's for sure.
So based on that, in that particular area, is it not possible to consider doing an easement along with a road extension now too, as part of the whole thing, to solve both problems?
I mean, that can be discussed with Stella Jones. I think they have plans to use that land as part of their outdoor storage. I mean, it wouldn't have stored right on the easement, but it'd be part of their access, so it becomes a question of who builds the road and does it become public or not, whether they would support that. I think they want to protect as much of their property as possible for their storage models, their wood models. We haven't asked that question about making a public road. It would only be about six meters wide, the easement, whereas a public road is 20 meters, so it would be a lot of property affecting their land. So yeah, four recommendations in this report, receive the report, allow staff to grant final approval when there are three outside agencies who still have to provide their approval or working with all of them to get their final clearances. Their requirements have been built in the subdivision agreement, NBC, Upper Grand School Board, and Bell Canada. The sign that Upper Grand requires is now up on the property, just advising people that it's a development area and where those kids who go to school will be determined by the board, may involve busing. Block 25 is, oh, that's the one about releasing those three townhouse blocks so that they're not required to be protected for a future road access in favor of having the road access for the east, and then finally allowing 28 units of servicing allocation to go back to the pool of units unreserved or unallocated, because they're not needed for the subdivision.
What does that mean for the future of that?
Which means for that by side, for that stage two area, if there's 28 units that are no longer committed to the subdivision, they'd be available for the land of the last or other land in that area.
For the future development?
Yeah, for whoever, basically first come, first served, kind of process.
So the developer would still own that land or not?
No, so that allocation would go back to the general pond, I suppose, where other developers from other properties could come and request that allocation.
It's just too much allocation, so it's an academic sort of exercise, that we have to set aside enough allocation of the plant to service that number of homes. They're not going to build as many, so we're sort of shifting that back into the pot so that there's more allocation available for somebody else.
Okay.
Or it's a buffer.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll read the motion. Be resolved, the council receives report P 2019-17 from the town planner, is presented circulated, and the council grants final approval of the Highland Village Plan of Subdivision file number 22-T-250001 under section 51 of the Planning Act. In the further resolve, the council directs the clerk to sign the municipal approval of the plan of subdivision and plans certified by the owner and surveyor, and forward copies of the approved plan of subdivision to the Land Registry Office for registration. Upon execution of the subdivision agreement, the clerks receive the following agents' clearances: number one, Ottawa Silver Valley Conservation Authority, number two, Upper Grand School Board, and number three, Bell Canada. And the council authorizes the release of blocks 146 and 147 on the final plan of subdivision, being block 25 on the draft plan, from condition number three, sub two, in consideration for potential future road access to the east request. And the council directs the council to reduce the servicing allocation for the Highland Village Plan of Subdivision from 273 units to 245 units for the final approved plan, and to transfer the remaining 28 units back to the stage two reserves. Move-in secondary for that, moved by Council Benato, seconded by Council Fegan. Any further discussion on that? Part in favor? There he is. Is Steve here again?
Yeah, final report, capitalizing on this application before in conjunction with minor variance application, this is for the new Old Water Lotting Plant at Prentice Drive and Curious Highway by Ice River Springs. So the site location is as shown here, it's a similarly sized block of land to the west of the existing Blue Mountain Plastics facility, along the east side of Prentice Drive. This site plan has been shown before. You can see that they're only occupying a part of the property initially with the proposed approximately 100,000 square foot building, which is the orange square in the top left corner. Their parking and loading area is located to the west side and in front of that to the south, and then a stormwater facility going in to the southeast at the lower part of the property, both of the main components of the site plan. I've also provided this graphic as part of the minor variance. You can see the proposed building is basically a square industrial building and would have some landscaping around the edges, berm along the north side, which is to the right of this slide, some landscaping in front of the parking area to the west, which is to the top, and then to the south, which is to the left, some landscaping screening off their loading space and truck parking area. The building is going to have a very industrial look, as might be expected, it's not going to have a lot of architectural detail, it's very simple, a steel-clad building, not unlike the one you see already on the Blue Mountain Plastics site, the newer building that they built with the cooling tower or the Predator Plastics site in operation. It'd be similar look to that, obviously not nearly as tall, this building would be somewhere between 30 and 38 feet in height to the peak of the roof, would have a shallow pitch roof. The little smaller part you see off the right inside of the building here would be the office space. That's about 30 feet by 46 feet, that front part, just to give you a sense of scale, whereas the main building is about 250 feet by 300, so a really large square building. South side of the building and west side of the building, again, very similar materials, south side would have all the loading base, all of this would be screened from view from the street by a berm and some landscaping. So at this time, the applicant is requesting site plan approval. Again, this is one where we're here probably a bit earlier than we would normally be, but it's because they have a lot of work to do in front of them over the summer. They have started their site works under a site alteration permit that was authorized by council. They've nearly complete their preliminary grading and have come to the town requesting to go to site servicing. And ultimately, also to, as soon as we can give it to them, to pull a conditional or a building foundation and shell only building permit. So they are moving aggressively because they have some internal equipment for the lotting facility on order coming from overseas and it's going to arrive this fall, so they're looking to have that building ready to go for that. So this is a staged approval where at this point, we're recommending a conditional site plan approval. First condition would be the site plan agreement is executed. We have a site plan agreement on the agenda tonight with the corresponding files, basically we offer other staff to have that agreement finalized and signed, similar to the format of the agreement that typically would for a site plan when they've addressed all of the other requirements, one of those being that the engineering review comments and any landscape review comments be finalized with final drawings. The engineering review comments that have come back so far have not been major, they're mainly technical items. There's a little bit of question around the sizing of the pond and whether that could be reduced. The size of the pond that they've shown on the site right now would be about the same size as the one that services the rest of the industrial park. And so the owners are obviously questioning engineers, why does it need to be that big for a smaller land area? So they're looking at opportunity to try and reduce the size of that pond a little bit, because they do intend to use more of the site with future building expansions as well. Those expansions would come back with the future site plan amendment application, so there will be future, further council approvals required for any further expansions.
So reducing the size of pond because it's looking like it's going to be all ash fault eventually at some point in time for the trucks to get in there and out, is there not going to be a bit of a concern with the amount of water that builds up within that area?
So they are sizing it, it will be required to size it for the ultimate build of the property. The question is, is the way they've sized it here, is that too large, like larger than necessary?
For now.
For the whole building?
For the whole building?
Because it's... Because it's, as I say, it's almost as large as the one that services the rest of the industrial park. And the rest of the industrial park is about three times the size of this property. So the question is, why, how can the rest of the park survive on that one pond when this property being a third of the size needs a similar sized pond? And there are some variables there. It's the amount of runoff, it's the amount of developable areas, the soil conditions, but you're basically, they've asked the question of both towns, the engineers and their own engineers can't reduce the size of that pond to allow ourselves more flexibility for future expansion.
So again, going back to the rest of the park, we don't know if there's other stormwater managed ponds required on some of those other properties necessarily present.
There won't be.
That one will service the whole park?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm sure our engineers will.
Well, I'll bet that won't, sure.
They feel it could be reduced.
Yeah, it hasn't been determined yet if it can be reduced. It's just, I wanted to flag that as something that in the final version of this plan, that could change the size of that pond if, because that's something the owners aggressively are persistent. We will make sure it's sized for the whole development of the site to make sure it doesn't cause any flooding or drainage issues. But the question that's been raised is that too big? Why is it so big? So that's to be determined. That's probably the most significant thing. That is the most significant thing of the engineering review. The other are more standards oriented or specifications related. We will get a little bit more detail as well on the landscaping of the stormwater pond. They provided preliminary landscape plan without, to the town standards.
The other question is on the amount of doors that they got there. I'm gathering that side of the building is certainly for the trucks to back up into, and I guess I'm looking at the site plan with all parkings in the front of the building, correct?
Yeah, two locations. So Prentice Drive is on the top of this slide. Our office staff and visitor parking would be on the west side of the building along Prentice Drive. And then there, the people that are on the floor in the bottling facility would be parking out the south end of this, I don't look a lot on the left side of the drawing.
Yeah, because all the trucks are up against the building, so those are for the trucks.
Correct, yeah. So these doors, this is the back of the building, the top one.
Yeah.
This is the east side of the building, so they're just main doors. These are for staff.
Oh, yeah, the west, south side, I guess.
This is the south side where you see all the bays and the trucks.
And the big one is?
I think that's for bringing equipment in and out. People start bringing the day off their trips. And then just the one door on the side facing Prentice Drive, that's the bottom drawing. So what we're recommending here is that we've received the report, allow staff to grant final site plan approval, when the site plan agreements have been executed. Subjects receiving those final drawings addressing the engineering review comments. The bylaw would allow staff to, the mayor to sign the site plan agreement when it's finalized and when the drawings have been received. And then finally, so far there hasn't been any engineering or other review comments that would change the size or location of the building. It needs owning, it needs all the servicing requirements. So on that basis, what we've done in the past where timing is a constraint is allow consideration of a restricted building permit, but it can only build the foundation and shell. Now, beyond that point, it's at the risk the building's not likely to move. If some kind of non-compliance or issue is found, that's for them to resolve. But at this point, there's no concern that the building is going to have to move or be of a different size or configuration. So this would allow them to at least start creating the foundation and then probably by the time the building is shell, the rest of the pool would be in place and they could then build the interior of the building. There would be no occupancy stranded until everything is properly, because and they could also have to pay the development charge at the time of this first approval.
I kind of hope the applicant was going to be here tonight, just because I have a couple of questions that may or may not know, but I'll ask them just in case they come up. Do you know what sort of employment that they're anticipating this may generate?
Yeah, for the size of the building, it's actually not huge, but they said initially for this building would be 30. And so it is primarily automated process. They don't require a lot of people to actually do the bottling operations, mainly inspection and making sure the equipment's working properly. Doing a little bit of the handling in terms of the shipping and the seating. Mentioned in my report that the water would be coming not from not far away, if it existed well, if they owned an emerit. Right now, they truck that water to Fleisherton or Fever Shand, and they bottle it there. So they absolutely reduce their trucking distance. But for the longer term plans, they have that water actually run to the water main to shell market and bottle so they can eliminate that part of the truck. The other trucking activity related to the jobs would be delivering, they bring the bottles, trunk it down, and then they blow them out in the facility so they can bring in way more bottles on the truck than they can take out. So bring them in on the truck. These are recycled bottles and then they fill them at the plant and they bring the finished filled bottles to market for distribution. They did say that both within the existing building and with the future expansions that that plant could grow. They said 60, it wasn't really clear if that's supposed to be in the existing building when they have full capacity there or if that's also for renovations. That was sort of, that's how they came up in partners, was parking standards to be the 60 spaces?
Even 30 is not significant, so that's.
So I've had a tour of their plant, Fever Shand, which is their bottling plant. I think that's something that if you can talk to the goss, we should organize a book and see. It's very, very interesting to watch the operation we have up there. So they're planning to bring a main gap for Fever Shand to this?
No, we come up from the well at Amaret, which is.
From the well at Amaret down on County Road 11? They own that one?
No, the county is steering them away from the county road.
No, no, but that.
Yeah, that's the well, yeah. So they haven't figured out a route for.
Want to bring that up and bottle up in here?
So the water will for sure be coming from that well. They'll be bringing it by truck. What they would like to do is eliminate the trucking.
No, and bring a main up and do the bottling in that plant that they're proposing. So that would be similar to what they're doing at Fever Shand right now?
Yeah, instead of delivering the water just there, they'll go over here for a while.
Okay, so talking to the house for staff, if you can organize a tour of Fever Shand, see how they do the bottling up there. And then they'll get an idea of what's going on at this point.
All right, so the motion reads, be resolved, council receives report P 2019-18 is presented and circulated, and the site plan application SPA 19-1 be approved, subjects to the following conditions: number one, that the owner enter into a site plan agreement with the town of Shelburne; and two, that the owner shall submit final site plan drawings and information addressing review comments and satisfaction of the town engineer; and further, that leave be given for the reading and enacting of bylaw number 44-2019, being a bylaw to enter into a site plan agreement with Barlow Trail Investments, Inc. for the industrial development of the property located at 108 Prentice Drive. And the council authorizes staff to issue municipal approval for a foundation and building shell only permit prior to final site plan approval provided the building location and servicing plans are finalized to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Move and seconded for that, Council Benato, seconded by Council Buffett. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a report from the clerk regarding cemetery bylaw.
I'll just give a quick overview. The Ministry of Government and Consumer Services has made some changes since 2016. We were a little delayed in getting this forward for council's consideration or the VAO's consideration because we were waiting for them to provide training on what the changes were. Subsequently, training was provided last year and it became determined that we needed to update our pre-existing cemetery bylaw. It was outdated, needed to incorporate some new legislation. So I highlighted in there the major changes that have been done within our new cemetery bylaw. We've changed some names. Frozen Cemeteries Act is now Funeral Burial and Formation Services Act. The former War of Funeral Services is now the Bereavment Authority of Ontario. Section four has been added. Resaler transfer of lots. Section 5A defines a scattering of test or animals permitted remains, which is not permitted. And 5Y advises that cremated remains cannot be entered into a headstone or monument. And section 9G identifies that requires certifications and documentation for a contract to perform work at the cemetery. So we followed the VAO's requirements for providing public notice. Notice was posted at the cemetery for 30 days, was posted in the paper, and we had to advise all of the funeral burial information services that utilize our cemetery. We had to provide them with a draft copy of the bottle. So the VAO has approved the new bylaw and has attached us pending one. It's just waiting for council.
Motion reads, be resolved, the council receives report LS 2019-12 from the clerk regarding cemetery bylaw number 39-2019 is presented and circulated. And further, that leave be given for the reading and enacting of bylaw number 39-2019, being a bylaw to maintain, manage, regulate, and control the Shelburne Cemetery. Council Fegan, seconded by Deputy Mayor Anderson. All in favor? Carried. Okay, next is a letter from the Shelburne Police Service Board. I'll read the motion first and then we can chat about it. So it's be resolved, the council receives the letter from the Shelburne Police Service Board regarding reallocation of money received from the province under the Ontario Cannabis Legislation Implementation Fund as presented and circulated. Move and seconded for that, Council Wagner, seconded by Council Buffett. So essentially, you can use jump in if you want, but as you'll likely recall, when we decided to, sorry, Wagner, but. Yeah, when we decided to opt in with respect to the retail sales of cannabis, that qualified us for certain funding from the province. The original intention that we had discussed at this level was that that money would be used to help support our bylaw operations because most of that force made we felt is over to bylaws. The police chief has indicated that he feels as though that money should perhaps be for writing directly to the police service's budget. So we had a discussion with the police service's board and said, we'll raise it to council and see what the thoughts are. So do you want to talk about actual dollar figures?
I'm not so prepared to. I mean, if you ask us to provide you with the analysis, we certainly will.
So I mean, at this point, the motion simply receives the letter, but does council want to go through a discussion on that or just leave it as is for how, maybe until after the service delivery review is done? That was kind of my thought. So just leave it status quo for now. We'll allow that process to play itself out and then we can perhaps reevaluate it once we have a better sense of what resources they may or may not need.
And how much more?
Okay. All right, so we'll call the question. That all in favor? Carried. All right, notions of motions. Couple here, so the first one, so again, these will be considered at the August 26th meetings. The first one is moved by Council Benato, seconded by Deputy Mayor Anderson. Be resolved, the council waived the fees on Fiddle Park to allow for cricket to be played for one month, to allow for them to organize and see if they have enough interest to form formally and be able to rent the park. Secondly, moved by Deputy Mayor Anderson, seconded by Council Benato. Be resolved, staff invite the Chair of the EDC to attend a future council meeting to provide counsel with a strategic plan for economic development for the town of Shelburne once data is obtained, if the council be advised. Okay, perfect. So we'll deal with those at the next meeting in August. Item number eight on the agenda is a list of communications. So we have a blanket motion be resolved, council receives items number one through seven. Item eight went over communications as presented and circulated. Move and seconded for that, Council Benato, seconded by Council Buffett. Does anybody want to chat about any of those? All in favor? Carried. All right, so we've got a closed session. I don't think we got long. So if anybody wants to stick around, be resolved that according to section 2.